Testing volume, testing, Katari test for January 25th meeting. One, two, three.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, Vice Mayor. Hello, hello, everybody. How are you doing? I'm seeing smiles. That's not a bad start for a meeting. I like that.
Doing good. Nice to see you all.
Yeah. Now, the trick is to be smiling by the end of the meeting. I think we can do that too, probably.
Council chambers have a new eye. For an upgrade in council chambers these days.
Getting a little. Down there, isn't it, Ben?
Oh, yeah. Seventy.
Wow.
I was thinking of getting a faux background for myself and I was going to take a picture of the back of City Hall. To have some fun then saying between the two of us, we had the place covered. Unfortunately, I found out my pad actually doesn't support that. I don't get to do it even if I wanted to, so. I will. Almost there. We've got one more minute. We'll see who we've got here. Mr. Morris. Okay, we have the full council. All right, we are at six o'clock. Our last, the city manager, are his staff ready to go?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. For the council, we are ready to go.
Wonderful. With that, good evening, everybody. I'm Mayor Mark Landman, and I'd like to welcome everybody watching to this joint meeting of the Katari City Council and the successor agency to the former Katari Community Redevelopment Agency for Tuesday, January 25th, 2022, our second meeting of the year. And with that, I'm going to ask our city clerk for a roll call to introduce the council to the community.
Councilmember Sparks? Councilmember Ford?
Here.
Councilmember Moore?
Present.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Here.
Mayor Landman?
And I'm here. Thank you. So with that, before we move on, I'm going to have City Manager Damian O'Vid, if he would be kind enough to introduce to the public our staff members who are present.
Absolutely. So, well, I'm City Manager Damian O'Vid. Also with us is Mark Bridges, our city clerk, who is emceeing the meeting with you, Mark. And then we also have Community Development Director Noah House, Chief of Police, Michael Parrish, Director of Admin Services, Angela Quarter, and Public Works Director Scott, and then our city attorney, John Bucker.
Very good. Thank you for that. So we're going to move on to item three, which is our pledge of allegiance. And I would like to ask everyone to join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag
of America.
And to the republic.
One nation.
One nation. Under God. Living in justice. Thank you. All right. And this brings us to approval of the minutes and notice of waiving a reading of all resolutions and ordinances introduced and/or adopted under this agenda. This is an action item, so I'll begin by asking if anybody in the council has any changes or corrections to the minutes as they stand. These are the minutes for January 11th, 2022. And I'm not seeing any hands go up. Very good. With that thought, I'll ask the city clerk if we could have public comment, please.
Looking to our attendees tonight, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use your raise hand icon, or if you're dialing in, dial star nine. Mayor Landman, that will end a public comment.
Very good. Thank you. So I'll bring it back and look for a motion in a second.
Move to approve?
I guess I can.
All right, we have a motion by Vice Mayor Harvey and Councilmember Ford by a nose. Is that close? I'll ask for a roll call vote from the, from the city clerk, please.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Mayor Landman?
Yes. All right, thank you. So that brings us to a summonance. So I will ask everyone to bear with me while I share a few things with the public. First of all, a meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted city council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items, where the city council will consider the item, and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizen's business item, which is the designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The city council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the city council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements that the city council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposely biased. Next, Measure F supports police services, a variety of recreation programs for all ages, and the maintenance of our streets, parks, and public buildings. See details on the web at katari-city.org. Citizens interested in receiving City of Katari community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up with Nixle by downloading the Everbridge app from the iOS or the Android App Store, or by simply texting your zip code 94931 to 888777. And like always, we would enjoy hearing from you, so please feel free to contact the city at 707-792-4600, or at info@katari-city.org. If you have a non-emergency issue after normal business hours, you can contact us still at 707-792-4611. And of course, if you have an emergency, please do contact 911. Continue to look for updates on the city's website and social media channels available on Facebook, Instagram, Nixle, and Nextdoor. So next, we have a presentation tonight. We have a presentation from the youth representatives of the Sebastopol Zero Waste Committee, who've been requested and invited by Vice Mayor Harvey to give us a presentation on SB 1383. And I'll hand this over to staff for our presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So tonight, we have Sunny Galbraith as a panelist who will be, I think, leading the presentation on behalf of, I believe she also has some students, but I'll let you introduce them. Go ahead, Sunny.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And I just want to make sure the students are, they're going to be able to unmute. Their names are Karina, Glenn, and Argus. Are they on the, are they like panelists?
I'm going to go ahead and promote them to panelists.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much for having us. My name is Sunny Galbraith, and I am a teacher in Sebastopol. And I am the chair of the Sebastopol Zero Waste Committee. And we have been, I've had students develop this great presentation on the new law about composting, making sure our food scraps and other organics go into the compost. And these are presentations we've given to various community groups, and we're available to give more. So if you know of a community group, Rotary, Library, et cetera, that would benefit getting this information out to the public, we'd love to be invited. So my students will introduce themselves. Argus, tell us who you are.
There. Hi, I'm Argus. I am a 10th grader at Orchard View School. I am a member of our Green Team, which has most of the students on, you know, as presenters are taken from the Green Team. They're all very active in the Green Team, which is an environmental club that is headed by Sunny Galbraith. I'm also the youth representative for Sebastopol's Zero Waste Committee. And this is one of my projects, getting this information out there to various community groups, including your city council. And I think I will hand it off to Glenn.
Hello, my name is Glenn Brassington. I am in ninth grade at Orchard View. I live in Roanoke Park. And I'm not, yeah, I've done some things in Green Team, but this is my first year being part of the Green Team community.
Thank you. And Karina?
Hi, my name is Karina. I'm an 11th grader at Orchard View School, and I'm also been a part of the Green Team for a few years. And yeah, I'm happy to be here to present to you all about SB 1383.
Wonderful. And let's see, I'm going to share my screen now. It's telling me another, someone else is sharing, and I can't share it yet, so. and I can't share it yet. So maybe whoever is sharing can stop sharing. There we go. That'll work. Okay. All right. So I'm going to let my students take it away. They're doing, we're going to go quickly through one part of this, which is a little quiz. We'll go quicker than we usually do for community groups because we know you have a lot on your agenda. So yes, take it away, students.
All right. So thank you so much for inviting us to present about this new state law to reduce waste that went into effect this January. We're going to put a link to the slideshow in the chat for you so that you have access to all the slides. Next slide, please. So what is this law mandate? So by 2025, it will reduce, we want to reduce the amount of organic material disposed of in landfills by 75% from the 2014 level. And also by 2025, no less than 20% of edible food currently disposed must also be recovered for human consumption. And organic materials are like yard debris, food scraps, wet or soiled paper or cardboard. So like, for example, paper towels. This law also expands on other bills that were previously passed in order to better our recycling practices. And yeah, it requires, okay. It requires sign up for compost collection services for businesses, schools, and residents, and fines may be issued for noncompliance, and some businesses will be asked to donate excess edible food to those in need. So who is impacted? Residents, businesses, and schools all need to meet the requirements of this law.
Okay, this is a fun little video my son made. It's very short.
When food scraps, paper products, and yard debris are buried in landfill, they release methane. A super powerful greenhouse gas was trapped 72 times for heat and carbon dioxide.
That's a fun little science lesson. All right, next slide. Whoops. This happens all the time. Okay, now there we go.
So these are the penalties for not complying with the law. The priority for us is to assist individuals, businesses, educational agencies, and other commercial entities to come into compliance since they produce larger amounts of food. Penalties will only be issued for recurring violations. What happens when food and other organic waste, like yard clippings, are sent to landfills? So some of the things that happen are that the food or organic debris is wrought without oxygen, which releases methane. Methane is 23 more, 23 times more powerful than CO2 with the potential of global warming. Nutrients from the food and other organic debris can never return to the soil. Composting reduces and prevents the methane emissions that result from organic materials rotting in landfills. It also allows nutrients to return to the soil, enriching it and resulting in a higher yields of agricultural crops. Climate change is a problem. I can't see if you switched it. It's not loading for me.
Yes, I switched it.
Okay. Climate change is a problem of carbon levels being out of balance. Currently, there is too much carbon in the form of carbon dioxide and methane in the atmosphere compared to what is sequestered in the ocean, living things, soil, and rocks. When organic materials such as food and yard debris end up in the landfill, they decompose anaerobically or without oxygen and produce greenhouse gases, both methane and carbon dioxide. Landfill gas emissions are made up of about 50%, methane and 50% carbon dioxide. Composting organic material significantly reduces greenhouse gas production. Aerobic compost gas emissions are mainly CO2. Furthermore, when finished compost is applied on land, greenhouse gases are pulled from the atmosphere and into the soil. Okay, methane is 80 times more powerful than CO2 over 20 years. So the effect of one CO2, so you'd have to have 80 CO2 particles to match the effect of one methane. In 2018, only 4% of wasted food was composted. 35 million tons of food waste went to landfill, creating methane and other sources, methane and carbon dioxide.
I switched the slide, Glenn. I think that was your last slide.
SB 1383 is not just a solution to our overflowing landfills. It also will help global warming. With the SB 1383 goals, by 2025, we hope that we will have reduced and removed a lot of greenhouse gases from the atmosphere.
Okay, so we can all be a part of the solution by correctly sorting our waste at home so no organics go into the landfill. So we're going to do a brief little quiz about which items go in which bin.
So this will be a self-quiz. Quiz yourself in your head, and we're going to go pretty quick through it. And first, Karina is going to briefly tell us what goes in each bin.
Yeah, so in the compost, the Recology green bin accepts food scraps, plant materials, soiled paper or cardboard, as long as it doesn't have a shiny coating, wood scraps, hair, fur, feathers, but unfortunately, no so-called compostable plastics because they take too long to break down, so they're not accepted by commercial compost facilities in our area. So in the recycling, you can put metal, paper, and cardboard if it's unsoiled, plastic containers, but no plastic bags, and glass. And it's important to remember that recyclables must be empty and dry so that they can be recycled and they don't get the other paper and cardboard wet. And they also cannot be in a bag because recyclables and bags get thrown out as workers don't have enough time to open the bags on the sorting line. And then in the garbage, the Recology garbage bin accepts broken glass and dishware, wrappers and chip bags, styrofoam straws, plastic bags and utensils, and coffee cups. But remember to put your compostables in the green bin. Okay, so quiz yourself silently in your head and see if you know where these tricky waste items go. Where do paper towels go? They go in the compost if they're wet or food-soiled. Where do fluorescent light bulbs and batteries go? Actually, none of these. They must be taken to household hazardous waste facilities, or this is a new thing. You can put your batteries in a plastic bag taped closed on top of your recycling cart, and Recology will pick them up for you. Where do bones go? They go in the compost. Where does cheese and meat go? Cheese and meat can go in the compost as well. And while you wouldn't put it in your normal backyard composts, the commercial compost facilities can get the compost to high enough temperatures to be able to handle these items. Where do plastic clam shells go? They go in the recycling as long as they're clean and dry. It's okay if they have a light residue, though. Where do plastic lids and straws go? Unfortunately, these have to go in the garbage. They're too small, and they fall through the holes in the recycling conveyor belt, so they cannot be recycled. Where do used pizza boxes go? They go in the compost because they are soiled with food. Where does compostable plastic go? In the garbage. They take too long to break down, as I mentioned earlier, so they're not accepted by compost facilities in our area. Where does waxed cardboard go? In the garbage. Where do wooden chopsticks go? They can go in the compost, the green bin. And where do paper coffee cups go? They actually have to go in the garbage because they have a shiny plastic lining. Even if they say they're compostable, they're not accepted by our compost facilities. Where does shredded paper go? Shredded paper goes in the compost. The fibers become less useful in the recycling process when they're shorter, and tiny shreds can't make it through the recycling sorting process. So Recology asks that you put your shredded paper in a paper bag and then place it in the green compost bin. And here's a pandemic bonus question. Where do gloves and masks go? They go in the garbage.
Yay! I'm sure you all did fabulous, but hopefully you got a few wrong, which means you learned something. Thank you, Karina.
We have a bunch of excellent resources for taking action here on this slide. Unfortunately, there is no chat feature, so we can't put the presentation in. Maybe we can change that. But, you know, there's a bunch of links to ecology and Zero Waste Noma and all of these great environmental action organizations that can help you follow this law to the best of your abilities.
Yes, and City Manager Damian, you have the link to this, so maybe there's, you could put it on the city website or something.
And here are links to some more excellent resources on SB 1383. So SB 1383 will have a big environmental impact by sequestering carbon, so more carbon held in soil, reducing the methane output, reducing waste, and conserving energy. It's not just limiting.
Sebastopol has passed this zero-waste food ordinance that bans certain items from dining ware. Most cities in Sanoma County have passed an ordinance like this. It also requires that businesses only give out lids, cutlery, to-go condiment packagings, and straws on request. We have a link to the model ordinance from Zero Waste Noma that the cities have based their ordinances on. Yay! Thank you for listening. Unfortunately, we won't be able to take questions because of time limits, but we really, really appreciate the opportunity to present to the city councils. Great.
Well, thank you all very much for being here. Sunny, Karina, Glenn, Argus, and everybody at the Green Team, thank you for a wonderful presentation. I will ask the council if they have any comments or quick questions for you, and I will start with Vice Mayor Harvey if she wants, since she's deeply involved and interested in this.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, thank you for bringing this to our council. This is the second time I've seen it, and you guys just do an awesome job, and I appreciate all the work that you guys have done to really get out and be the next generation that's helping with this. So I wish you all the best and really appreciate all the work you do, and thank you again for coming to visit our council.
Yeah.
And I see a hand up from Councilmember Ford.
Thank you, Mayor Landman, and thank you to all the presenters. I just wanted to assure you, we do have the presentation, and the links are live in it, so we have access to all that, even though you couldn't share them in the chat. Thanks.
And if you could share with the public, too, that's awesome.
Yeah, they have the same access that we do to the packet, including the presentation. All right, and Councilmember Sparks, I think I saw your hand up. Did you have anything you'd like to add?
I was going to say the same thing as Councilmember Ford is, but I will add that I will be happy to share that link out on my social media, and I thought that the Q and A or the multiple choice questions were really helpful, and I think that'll help people figure out how to do this. So thank you.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Landman. I just want to thank the students and Ms. Galbraith for your presentation. Have to give a shout out to Mr. Brassington, as I just met him at the library advisory board meeting last week, and he was a guest there as well. So thank you all very much. And despite sometimes how it might look like it's inconvenient, my wife is a zero-waste specialist for Recology, and lo and behold, she claims that I'm now one of her best composters. So once you get in the habit, it's not too bad. So thank you all very much, and continue the good work. Education is going to be key on this.
Yes, indeed. And I'll just thank everybody again for the presentation. Particularly, thank you for carrying us through the test. I think the council could have aced it, but you'd never know. And it was a good educational thing because there's a few things that some of us might not have suspected. So I think that's valuable. And with that, I will ask staff, to the degree that we can share some of this information or pieces of the presentation or links on our social media, I think that would be a wonderful thing to do. So thank you all again. And since we did take some time to do some discussion, even though this isn't an action item, I will open it up to public comment, just in case anybody would like to comment on this.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Looking to our attendees tonight, if you would like to make a public comment, please use your raise hand icon, or if you're calling in, you can dial star nine.
I did just look up Kattati. Thank you. You guys also passed the foodware ordinance. Nice work, Kattati!
Thank you. Nothing like encouragement from a teacher. People always need that.
Gold star!
All right. So thank you very much. So let's see, we move on now from that to item seven, which is the approval of the final agenda, another action item. So I'll begin by briefly asking the city manager if we have any changes to tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. No proposed changes.
All right. And as this is listed as an action item, I will ask the city clerk to again see if we have any public comment, all right?
Looking to our attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use your raise hand icon. Mayor Landman, that will end the public comment.
Excellent. Thank you very much. All right, this brings us back to item number eight on our agenda tonight. And this is citizens' business and public comment for consent calendar items. And I do have something to read first before we can get started. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any item or items listed on the consent calendar or any matter or matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2021-01, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where disability accommodation has been requested. So with that, I will ask the clerk to open public comment for citizens' business and consent calendar comments.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Looking to the attendees, if you would like to make a public comment, please use your raised hand icon. Mayor Landman, that will end the public comment.
And thank you for that. So this brings us then to item nine, which is our consent calendar, another action item, but we've covered that. And this is for three items, consent items A, B, and C. And I'll begin by asking if any council member wishes to pull any item. And seeing no hands go up, okay, I will next ask if we have a motion.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
All right. So we have a motion from Vice Chair Harvey and a second from Councilmember Ford. I'll ask our city clerk if we can have a roll call vote, please, on our consent calendar.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Mayor Landman?
And yes. So thank you. So that brings us to item 10, which is direction on future agenda items. So I will ask the council if anybody has anything they wish to bring forward tonight. Not seeing any hands. So that is, thank you, a perfect segue right to our regular agenda. And item 11A, which is actually a discussion on a process for direction on future agenda items. So I'll ask our city manager for our presentation to begin now.
Thanks, Mayor. Members of the council. So I mean, I know you all know this very well, but just for the benefit of any public that might be watching. Each year prior to budget development, the city council holds a public strategic planning discussion to discuss priorities for the upcoming year, and also discuss kind of where projects and initiatives are in the current fiscal year as we get closing, get to closing out the second half of the year. And it continues through Public Works.
And it continues through public workshops, budget workshops that follow the strategic planning, where these projects and programs are prioritized against available resources. So that's the that's sort of the starting point, right? And then after budget adoption, of course, it's always inevitable that new things come up through the year, things that just couldn't be anticipated at the time that the budget was developed. So for that very reason, the prior item that we just discussed in the council agenda is direction on future agenda items. And that's the that's the place in the agenda where new where there's new things that come up large and small can be can be brought up sort of midstream and discussed. And a lot of the things for small, you know, they might just be letters to the league of or that now called Cal Cities, you know, or resolutions to support, things like that, that are pretty simple to things that are big, like new ordinances that could require significant public input and then everything in between. So the the current process is that a council member can can bring up a proposed new agenda item to add to a future city council agenda. And if the majority of the council consents, then staff will bring this back at a future meeting, sort of a but you know, it's it's a bit of an unstructured method, but that's how it works right now. But it is obviously an important tool for the city council to remain flexible and responsive to new issues as they come up through the year. So the vote in the staff report is a is a proposed informal process to give it a bit more structure and make it a bit more efficient. And it really doesn't, the idea is trying to balance balance and efficiency in terms of you know, reprioritizing existing council priorities, but also providing flexibility throughout the year. And I'll just, it's it's all printed in the packet, but basically the idea would be that if there's any new future agenda items that a council member wants to bring up, that that conversation would happen with the city manager in advance. And so we could have an internal discussion about what that might need in terms of staff resources and how that may or may not impact other priorities or the timing on other council priorities. If is that's the first category, that's probably going to be most of the requests. The second category is things that are just too large to be accommodated currently, but they're not time sensitive, so they could wait a bit. And so the idea there is that it is that if the council agrees, then that item would basically be put on a on the list to be considered at either mid-year budget or or budget process. Again, so that would be things that aren't that can wait potentially, you know, for five, well, in worst case, you know, six months for a conversation. And then, of course, the last category is things which is time sensitive. They can't wait that. They can't wait for however however long it would take to get to mid-year or get to the budget discussion. And, you know, in that case, if the majority of the council wants to move forward on it, then the staff kind of like it is now would come back. And, you know, it's as quickly as possible to have a conversation about existing priorities and how this might fit in. And or or not, and just have a discussion about priorities and how we accomplish the the new priority. And like I said, the this this is a just sort of an informal process at this point. If the council does want to in the future, I mean, this is something if it seems to function well, could be added formally council rules, but that's not the proposal tonight. It's just an informal process at this point. So with that, I would be happy to hand it back to you, Mayor. You may have more to add, or I can take questions.
I think first, yeah, I'll open it to questions from the council. See if the committee has any questions regarding this. Make sure I can see all of you here on my screen. Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Mr. Opid, currently, the process is either a council member may request an item to be on a future agenda or the current mayor could place an item on the agenda. Would this change that at all? Or would any of the items that have to come forward for future agenda items have to be approved by a majority of the council?
Well, so, you know, my thought is is that the the manager and the mayor work on the, you know, the upcoming agendas, and if it's you know, if it's an item, if it's so so basically the conversation stick kind of point one on the on the staff presentation is that the council member and the manager have a conversation about how time intensive the request is. And so if it's not a very time intensive request, then, you know, some things, like a good example is the Cal Cities letter could just go on the on the agenda. But if there's things that are more time intensive, then that would you know, my thought is that would just even if the even if the mayor and the manager are talking about it in advance, it would just be essentially the advanced conversation that any council member would have. And then it would come up in direction under future agenda items, the full council can hear hear what the request is and decide if they want to move forward on it.
The the reason I ask is because in the nine years that I've been involved with the council, whomever wanted to put an item on the agenda will put in a request. And of course, if the mayor had an item that they wanted to put on the agenda, that was on the agenda for the following meetings or the a meeting down the road. If I am in disagreement with old Ben and Mark, it's it's possible that my item may not be approved to be on the agenda. Is that correct? With the under this format.
I'd be happy to take the stab at that, actually.
Sure.
Not that we've ever had those issues, but they could come up down the road.
I mean, my understanding is we've always had the ability of, let's say, that our next meeting, I propose that we institute, and I can say something ridiculous just for an example. But I institute the we institute a new role at City Hall. This would be the city dog catcher, and I want him paid higher than the chief of police with the city manager. And I want staff to research a city dog catcher roles throughout the state and the US to bring back to us. Now, that might be something, even if staff has time to do it, most of you probably really wouldn't want to see come to council or take the time to talk about. So if everybody rose their hand and said, no, we don't really want to take the time to talk about this, I think there's always been that potential. The truth of the matter is the way it's always gone, everybody's just agreed. I don't think any of others suggested anything in my 13 years in council that's been so concerning or controversial or problematic or perceived as problematic, that people weren't willing to hear it. But we do certainly have that veto power to do a what I would call basically a quick thumbs up or thumbs down vote, a straw poll, if you which I've seen done in other boards and commissions. That's the only intention. So in your example, John, what I would understand, if you propose something, and even if you haven't sold Ben an eye on it, well, there's only two of us. Nobody else says anything. There's no reason that shouldn't go forward.
Good. Thank you.
Oh, sorry, Mark. I was I was just gonna add real quick with the with the manager, mayor, agenda setting process. In in my experience, it's always been that in that conversation, if there's anything that's problematic or could be an issue or could be, you know, really time consuming, it doesn't just get agendized, it gets put out on future direction on future agenda items for a conversation with the full council. So only
And I would toss in, at least as current mayor, my expectation of this, and thank you for bringing it up, John, because I had looked in that light. I would expect as mayor and any future mayor after me to follow this guideline as well, because that should apply to the mayor too. If the mayor has some specific project that he'd like to bring it up, he should go through the same process of asking the city manager if there's time for it, and then follow the three step guidelines we have. Go the best route to accomplish that whenever the earliest possible date. So I think just because we're in a position of being mayor and help set the agenda doesn't mean if we have an item, it bypasses this. That's not my intention, and I I don't think it should be personally. I hope you would all agree with that. And I'm going to switch to Mr. Ford. We were just talking about you disagreeing with Mr. Moore, so we'll have a chance to see where you're at tonight.
Yeah, that'll be the day. So two questions. First off, the staff report recommends that the council adopt by motion, something approved by motion, something like this. So I'm I'm a little unclear on like a motion does formalize this agreement versus a discussion and a and an agreement among us about how we're going to move forward. So I'd like a little clarity on that in intent there, because since I'm not sure what the motion would say if we did have a motion. I would be comfortable with a with a conversation among the five of us about how we're going to handle this moving forward with input from the public, to to see what they think of that. So that's one question. The other is this this analysis, let's say I I have a item that I want to suggest, and I bring it to the city manager, and and his role in this is to to essentially evaluate how much staff time that request might have, might might require. And I just want to be clear that we're talking about the staff time that would be required for the council to have the proposed discussion. Not the staff time that would be the result potentially of any action the council might take at said discussion. So that the if if there's if the the proposed discussion for the council does not require a lot of staff time to prepare for the discussion, then the staff time that would be required to implement any action should be part of the discussion that the council has at that point. In other words, I don't want us to agree on a policy or or a practice for moving forward that says the city manager has the authority to essentially say, we're not going to talk about any issues that might produce work for six months. Right? That that can be a council discussion, as long as the staff time isn't required to prepare for the discussion. I just want to clear that up. That's my understanding, but I want to make sure that's others. Thanks.
As the responsible party for this suggestion for guidance, I would say, no, bottom line, what you're requesting there is simply a discussion. If there isn't staff resources, time and money, or budgetary adjustments that have to be made to do that, and it would have to be one heck of a discussion for that, then that falls under a category one of our guidance. That's a no problem from my perspective, and I'll ask the city manager to chime in if he sees it any differently. And I think it would certainly be, number one, both our agreements, this shouldn't be a tool allowed to certainly block discussion or even move them forward on items. I don't think that would be the case whatsoever whatsoever. And finally, I'm proposing this now because we're in a kind of a very good place, actually. Compared to some years past, we actually have more of a fully staff organization than we had in some years past. We have more resources. We're doing a lot of things. As it's clear to all of us, and you can see in this community, there's a lot going on, and that's a great place to be. But I've noticed that puts us in a position now, we start thinking new directions to go. It becomes, wait a minute, we have a pretty full dance card, if you will, for good chunks of time going forward. And that doesn't mean we can't reassess that. If there's time to reprioritize, we will and should do that. But it means if we can avoid just constantly re-prioritizing things, unless it's necessary, it would be ideal to avoid it because it's a lot more efficient, if that makes sense to you.
Yeah, thanks.
Councilmember Sparks?
Thank you. Before I take my turn, could we go back and get a little more info on the Councilmember Ford's first question about what exactly the vote vote would mean?
I'm gonna ask the city manager a bit if he'd like to weigh in that. I I see it simply as we're moving, approving, or adopting guidance for adding new items. Guidance is a pretty loose term, and as described here, really, there's no real restrictions on our abilities other than just some slight time restraints for something that might be complex or expensive. And even then, if it's time sensitive, we go ahead with it.
Yeah, that's that was the that was the thought is that it would be, you know, rather than just having a conversation with no end, like no outcome, just making sure that there is agreement among the majority of the council that the guidance or some version of it on in the staff report is what we want to do.
We could, if if the majority, and we're getting past questions here, forgive me, this is my my bad. But if the majority of the council would prefer to have this documented in like our city council handbooks or something, we could certainly do that. I feel, though, I'm hopeful this is the type of thing will wax away, and sometimes we might need to lean on it a bit, and other times, hopefully, it will be, it's not a work. But I'll leave that up to your decision. So if you have a little more you wanted to ask?
I'll defer to the to the city attorney for a moment.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, as I you both said, you and the manager said you'd be adopting guidance. The way I understood the staff report and the recommendation was that the proposed recommendation was to adopt the guidance listed on page packet page, is that 115?
That is 115.
Right, items one through three. And I don't think the paragraph that follows item three was intended to be included. So the motion would be to adopt that language and have that serve as the guidance for future adding agenda items in the future.
Yeah. Thank you. So Councilmember Sparks, I I think you were right in the middle of your questions.
Sure. So my question, thank you so much. My question was just sort of technical. Between between option two and or guideline two and guideline three, it's possible that there could be some disagreement about whether it's time sensitive enough to warrant being dealt with right away, or whether it should be pushed off to the next mid-year session. So my question is, if there's some disagreement in the council, is it allowable for us to discuss that during the future agenda items section or not? Because it feels like we might sort of delve into discussing the item itself in that circumstance. So I'm just kind of wondering how that would work if there was some disagreement, and maybe the city attorney could chime in on that. I'm not sure.
Well, certainly, and I will say my intention in this, if you'll notice the way it's written, it's the determiner that if this is time sensitive, is the city council member. I would hope and I would fully expect, knowing our staff and my colleagues on the on the council here, that we would probably have the same view. Something would either clearly be too impactful to jump in right away and will be evident, or it would be something our hardworking staff, as they usually do, is willing to add to their list and work on. But I've left it, and I expect that determiner to be the city council member and his or hers colleagues as well. So I would think that would be the process. For example, if there's something I wanted to bring forward, and the city manager told me, and I and I felt it was time sensitive, and he disagreed, and I felt so strongly, I would bring it in front of you as a request. I would lay out my thoughts and and then I would look to, I suppose, if we had to get in too much discussion other than a quick straw poll, if we wanted to proceed, then we would have to agendize time to talk about it. You're right. But this doesn't stop us from agendizing that time to talk about. So because it was important to me, efficiency was important, but keeping the options open had to be kind of number one.
I think, well, okay, thank you so much. I the rest of what I have to say, I guess, is a comment, so I'll save it for afterwards.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yeah, I I'm struggling with this because we're saying that you have a conversation with the city manager, and then the city manager makes some form of assessment. And what I heard you tell tell Councilmember Ford is it can still be brought forward for discussion, even if we may or may not proceed with it. And I guess the way I read this, it's unclear to me that it would ever go anywhere unless we could make a case to the city manager that it was time sensitive. And then that's his call as to whether he believes that or not. And we can't bring up these things when we're discussing future agenda items because we can't get into that detail. So that's kind of what I'm struggling with a little bit, if that makes sense.
Yeah, no, it does. Did you want me to speak to that, Susan?
Yeah, because I want to be sure that we're not, you know, pushing things down that that it may make sense for us to put them off, but without having that discussion, you know, it it never daylights.
Well, exactly. Well, exactly. And I think I, I see Ben's point was kind of a shade, but it was a good one to bring up. There are some items that might, if we choose to go forward with them, might indeed become complex. They might become expensive, might take a lot of community involved with multiple, multiple meetings. But then again, it might be interesting. If I was bringing something like that, I might want to at least just put it up as a trial balloon and ask if we could discuss it briefly at council without staff doing all the research, which is the problematic part, just to see with my colleagues' felt this was worthwhile to look into. I think, Ben, did I understand that was kind of what you were saying? To be able to float trial balloons and not be limited to do that. And I took his point that this was not impactful on staff time, not impactful in staff resources, or damage to the budgetary or existing prioritization. So it struck me as well, this fits under number one, that's just information that doesn't impact anything. And any of this, we should have the ability to do that if we wish. And that does lead then when we have that discussion, that frees us from your concern, can we discuss something that's not agendized? Well, if it's worth discussing, we'll agendize it. We can have that discussion. And if the bulk of the council feels it's worth then going into reprioritization and that work and having staff come back, we could do that. And I think that's, even though it sounds cumbersome, I think it's better than just asking for it and having staff go off and do all this work when we're not even sure if we're even really interested as a group truly in doing this. So I kind of see where Ben's coming from in this. And I think it would be workable. I hope that's-
So what you're saying is this process or these guidelines allow for that floating of the balloon, if you will, to see where the council is using item number one, and that will be what we suggest is that not using a lot-
I just said it, yes. I think that's a perfect way of putting that. That seems like something we have to do.
Okay.
And, and Mayor Lammon, if I understand my role, Vice Mayor Harvey, is, is I would only be providing feedback on what sort of budgetary or staff impact a request might have. The time sensitivity of something is really the requesting council member to determine, I think. I mean, we may, I may have some, you know, some thoughts on it, but that's really in terms of how quickly it should be agendized for discussion.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Let me just look through one more time. I see one more hand up. Councilmember Sparks, one more question before we go to public comment?
Thank you. I, I, I thought of this as, as the discussion was going on. I want to just state the way I'm understanding it, and then you tell me if that's right or not. Make sure I'm figuring, understanding it right. So let's say just as an example, I thought, you know what, we need to have a vote on, or we need to discuss item X, and it's super important, and it's going to take a lot of staff time, and we need to do it now. So if I were to bring that during direction on future agenda items, and I said, look, staff needs to do this stuff, we need, we need to do this right now, I'm bringing it under item three, like guidance three. And everyone else said, no, not so much. We don't think that's important right now. We don't, we don't approve of, of doing that. Could I then, in the same direction on future agenda items, say, well, okay, then I would like us to have a discussion about the importance of this item and, and, and use sort of guidance number one then to come back and say, okay, if we're, if, if we don't all agree that we can devote all the staff time to do this, then I want to have that discussion. Is that sort of the way that that would work? Because-
We're getting, we're getting pretty complex here. I, I, I think we're at the far end of the fractal here. But in theory, I don't see any reason you could, couldn't do that. The bottom line, as long as you've worked through the city manager to see if something's impactful or not, even if he tells you, yes, it's very impactful, but you feel it's important, then you can ask for it. Now, as to what the rest of the council does, like we said, typically, we've never seen the council say yea or nay in this. We just generally accepted. If the majority of your colleagues felt, no, we didn't want to do this, they might want to say thumbs down. They would have to speak up and say that. I've yet to see that. And what I think would have to be a pretty egregious situation for that to happen. And that could happen in either thing. So even if you want to say, I'd like to bring this forward just as a discussion then, we've always had the ability to say, no, we really don't want to see that as a group, but we generally afford each other the latitude to bring what we want, knowing that nobody's going to bring anything that egregious or out of the. So I, I hope that's helpful. Bottom line, I think you still have as much ability to bring things as you do now. The worst case scenario might be if it isn't something that's time sensitive, have a delay of some months. And then if it is time sensitive, then you shouldn't wait. No.
I, I think that answers my question. And I just want to clarify, the reason I'm asking is just because I'm trying to understand the limit of how much we can talk about during the direction of future action items section, you know, like we can't have a discussion on, is this time sensitive or not, or how important is it?
I would think, and I'm just, and I'm just speculating here, and I'll offer the city manager, the city attorney to jump in if they wish. But if we got into a discussion like that, the situation, something like composed, where we were trying to weigh in, well, wait a minute, does this need a fuller discussion? If it got beyond a little brief back and forth and maybe a quick straw poll or something, then I would imagine we'd just have to agendize this and have a discussion. And again, since it wouldn't take a lot of staff time or resources to do that, I don't see any reason we wouldn't do that. Does, does that sound logical to you?
Yeah, it does. Thank you.
Good. Good to ask these questions. And speaking of questions, well, now it opened up to public comment, please.
Looking to our attendees tonight, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use your raise hand icon. That will end public comment.
Thank you for that. All right. So I'll bring it back to see if there's any further discussion or if we have a motion. And I see a hand up from councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Lammon.
Councilmember Sparks.
I would just remind folks that if, if we do look at adopting this as guidelines, they are just guidelines, and they're not set in concrete. And not only that, if it doesn't work, we can always take it, change it. So with that in mind, I would be comfortable with approving a motion, adopting these three guidelines.
All right. So we have a motion on the floor. I'll see if we have a second, but I know we have more discussion to go forward. So I'll look quickly. If anybody has a second, I'll invite you just to unmute your audio and speak.
I'll second the motion.
All right. And a second from councilmember Sparks. All right. Then that takes us to councilmember Sparks. You were next.
Well, yeah, I think that this is a good idea. And I really, I, I really think that it'll be nice to have a little more certainty about when things are coming back. And, and I'm just overall wanted to express my support. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, with all the clarifications that we had during questions, I'm, I'm in support of the motion. I, I think it's helpful for me as one of the newer council members to actually have some structure around that direction on future agenda items, right? It was never clear to me what sorts of things were okay to bring up there and propose and where they went after that happened. So this is helpful.
It was so amorphous. Thank you. All right. Let me look one more time. No further questions. We have a motion and a second on the floor. I will ask the city clerk if we can have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Sparks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Mayor Lammon?
Yes, and thank you. So that carries unanimously. So with that, we'll move on to our next regular agenda item, item B. And this is council assignments to CERA for calendar year 2022. And we have a staff report written by city manager Obid. I'll ask for the presentation, please.
Mayor, members of the council. So CERA is the new REMIF, which is our risk pool GPA that we're all part of, basically our insurer. And on December 14th of last year, we, those are most recent updates to our council assignments. And in continuing the prior assignments from the prior year, we, the city council reappointed councilmember Moore as the primary to CERA, and myself as the alternate. And everything was, everything was good. And then we had our exec, we actually had our annual CERA meeting just last week. And the general manager for CERA noticed with the newly, with the newly crafted bylaws for CERA, that to be on the executive committee, you need to be a, a primary board member, the primary delegate and support member. And so for years, sort of how the, how the, how the work has gone with REMIF is, has been on the executive committee for REMIF, and councilmember Moore has been on the board. And so we were just continuing that arrangement. But with the new bylaws, that, that arrangement doesn't work anymore. So we had, that left us the two options. And, and, and one is that we can, you know, we just kept the designees the same, that being councilmember Moore is the primary and myself is the alternate. But what that would mean is that Katati would be, or at least my seat would be removed from the executive committee. And then the board, the CERA board would then have to re-nominate somebody new for the executive committee, which may or may not be councilmember Moore, you know, may or may not be, you know, basically the same city. So the alternate, the alternate alternative is we just, and this is what's recommended, is that we swap the designations so that I become the primary and councilmember Moore becomes the alternate. And, and then we would still serve in the same capacity. Because the primary or the alternate serve as a voting board member, but only the primary can serve executive committees. Swap nations, then I would continue on the executive committee. Councilmember Moore would continue on the board as the representative, even though at least from active, he's now sort of the alternate, but that arrangement, I don't see that arrangement changing unless councilmember Moore wanted to, you know, step down from the board. But I don't think that's the case. So with that, I would be, oh, answer any questions or?
Thank you for that, city manager Obid. And I'm going to go right to councilmember Moore. I see your hand up. So we'd love to hear from you.
Thank you, Mayor Lammon. I just would elaborate on that a little bit more. During the transition, and, well, let me go back a little bit. Damien has been involved as an alternate with REMIF for multiple years. So his knowledge and institutional knowledge is significant. With all of the changes that have occurred between REMIF and the other JPA ParsAC, and then emerging to create CERA, Mr. Obid was on that transition committee. So his knowledge on that and the historical information on that is significant moving forward. I would be in support of this particular recommendation and, and motion because if, if I have nine months, 10 months, whatever the time period is left on 2022, 11 months, as an elected representative, and still have the ability to vote on the board, and keeping the expertise gained with Mr. Obid on the executive committee, I think that would be advantageous to all involved. And then going forward, whomever comes back in on the council and may want to address those roles. But for now, I'd be completely supportive of this.
Thank you. All right. I'll ask if any of my other colleagues have any questions for councilmember Moore or city manager Obid. Not seeing any hands right now, so we'll take a moment to see if we have any public comment on this item.
Looking to our attendees tonight, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use your raise hand icon. If you're dialing in, dial star nine. That will end public comment.
Well, it appears this is not controversial. That's a good thing. So I'll bring it back to the council for further discussion. See if we have any other further input or questions from anybody?
If there's no further concern, I would be happy to make a motion on that.
I'd be happy to accept that motion. And we have so a motion from councilmember Moore, a second from councilmember Harvey. And I was just going to say, yeah, I appreciate hearing councilmember Moore that you're supportive of this. I would not surprise, of course, to hear that because I know we would work with staff as we always do in a partnership. And I think the idea of maintaining that extra influence on the board director, the executive board rather, particularly since we've just merged two different areas from different regions together, is really the most beneficial thing we can do for our region. So I think it's simply put the smart play. So I'm very supportive. So we have a motion in a second. I will ask if we can have a roll call vote on this, please.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Mayor Lammon?
Yes. And thank you. So that concludes our regular agenda for tonight and brings us next to the city managers' report.
Right. Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. So just a reminder that we do continue to partner with the county's provider for COVID testing at the St. Joseph's Park and Ride Lot, and that is Tuesdays and Wednesdays, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And appointments are definitely recommended, especially now, there's a lot of testing going on. We're, our neighborhood officer beat meetings are coming up. So the officers rotated beats just recently at the start of the year. So the week of February through 11th is going to be our upcoming officer beat meeting. And the meetings will be held by Zoom, on Zoom, and they're going to be advertised on the city website, Facebook and Instagram. So we'll look for soon on that. The West Side Street project, we're currently taking advantage of a short, or hopefully just a short dry weather spell to install the pathway on the West School Street between West Sierra and the tunnel. And so that pathway is going as well as the new retaining, the new barricade at the bottom of the hill there by the tunnel. And a short retaining wall is currently being installed up against the fencing there by the freeway. And it's going to be followed by installation of the pathway. And it's pathways identical to the decomposed granite type pathway that was used on the Richardson Lane pathway. So if you've seen the Richardson Lane path, that's what it'll look like when it's complete. And then the way rehab is going to be following once we get some warmer weather. But that's underway. Also, this, the wayfinding sign program, those are being constructed at the, along the creeks right now, and they'll be making their way into downtown. And these are the kiosks. And by mid-March, we should have most of the informational placards up on those and essentially complete. The interpretive panel that we discussed several months ago is still being iterated on. So that's going to follow at some later date. But the other sort of just basic directional and informational signs will go on by mid-March. That's going to be wrapping up soon. If you've been to City Hall, you might have noticed behind the Katati Room, there's been some excavation work. And so we're doing a backup power reliability project. We have two generators. And to back at City Hall, there's one that's essentially in the police parking lot. And there's another one that's behind the Katati Room. The one behind the Katati Room is, is quite old. So when, when we did an assessment of our generator capacity, the police generator is, has enough capacity to power both City Hall and the police building. And actually, it's actually a better arrangement because the police generator is a significant capacity that is underutilized. And when you have a generator that runs below capacity, it's just not great for the generator either. And it also, so, so we decided that it would make the most sense to tie City Hall into that one generator so that we, instead of maintaining two generators, we just have the one generator, less emissions, maintenance, and it's better for the, for the police generator. So that's, that conduit has all been laid and it's the connected. This is just a follow up on, we talked about it way back in strategic planning, but we haven't talked about it since then. But that's the detail behind that project. And is being close to completion, which is great. And on, on energy, so just as a, as a side note, our EV should be delivered at the end of this week from the factory. And then we need, then we need to outfit it. So that's going to be, depending on how long it takes to get, get outfit, I'm looking forward to hopefully taking receipt of a new police cruiser that's electric, fully electric in the next couple of months. Housing element, so we have a lot going on there. A upcoming workshop that we're partnering with the city of Warner Park on for community-based org- for community-based organizations. That's on February 2nd. And we, we're partnering with them primarily so that, you know, so that we max, we don't, we don't over utilize their, their availability and resources. They don't have a lot of time to be sitting through workshops with us. And so we wanted just to combine it so that we can have a single conversation with all those CBOs. So these are things, you know, these are organizations, nonprofits like Cafeteries, Pedaloma People Services who runs the safety program for us. And by social services for the South County area. So that's coming up on February 2nd, virtually. It's a virtual meeting. And then also on February 22nd in the evening, city council and planning are going to be jointly having an initial conversation on the housing element. Looking at the, you know, looking at the housing opportunity sites as well as initial conversations about housing policies, getting some input there. So, I think coming workshops right now, we also have a lot of other public participation plans for early March. But if people are interested, they can go to the city website and sign up for an interest list. And by the way, all the things I'm talking about are, are, are the details and the links are all posted on the city website. So if you go to the city website, city halls, city news, there's a city manager update and you can find all this there in more detail with links. And one more thing on housing before I just cover rec, some rec programming and then that'll conclude it. But I just wanted to mention, city staff has gotten at least, at least one call or maybe a couple of calls over community concerns or, you know, a process used to vet affordable housing applications for, like Kessin and Jamie Lane. And just wanted to let the council and the public know that community development has reviewed the process and very confident that our, our our vendor, the Housing Land Trust is vetting these applications and keeping with all the legal requirements and best practices for assigned affordable housing units. In any case, so we are, we are planning to document this process and publish it on the community development webpage. So everyone knows what that process is. Just to make it completely transparent for everyone, but and then for creation. So if you have loved one in Katati on February 14th, we're delivering Valentine Day grams for the second year straight. And it's going to include, it's a personalized after the flower cookie card and other goodies, but make sure you sign up early because we usually sell out quick on that. We're more than halfway sold out already. Starting February 2nd, we have music together classes for parents and kids, birth age five. We have some children's dance classes, three to seven. That's actually coming back for our second month. And then in the Verona Flatty Ranch, we have teen art classes starting early in February. Expressive painting and polygraphy painting. Taught by local popular artists, you can, and then we have a bunch of other programs, Zumba Fitness, Zumba de Kido, children's theater programs and many more things. But you can find all this stuff on our city website if you're interested. With that, I'd be happy to.
All right. I will look to the council and see if I see any hands up. And council member Sparks, you're first.
A quick question about the generator. Since we're switching to one generator, how, how often is that generator tested?
It's tested at least monthly, maybe even more frequently than that. It has auto run, you know, so it starts up and runs for test, through a test cycle. At least once a month.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Seeing one quick one, I just want to confirm something with the city manager on the west side roadwork that's beginning, the pathway specifically. I, I heard there was a concern. I was mentioning to somebody who heard a concern online somewhere about the center line of the road being moved westward, making the road narrower and the fencing. It was apparent, I believed it was just temporary to protect the workers during construction. But I wonder if you could speak to that and just confirm that. So people understand that. As I looked at the new center line, I certainly hope it's temporary because it kind of wiggles like this on that old road. So I, I believe it to be temporary, but I want to hear it from you. So I'm sure I'm saying the right thing.
That's a very construction-ish temper line, center line for the roadway, but Craig, would you like to just verify that I'm correct on that?
Sure. Yes. So, so that is a temporary relocation of the center line. They need, the contractor needs space there for installing the pathway. The ultimate center line will be about a foot west. It's not as far as it is now, but it, we did borrow a foot from that eastern side, easterly side of West School Street for the pathway. So it's not, not as dramatic a shift as, as you see out there now. And, and it'll be FDR and repaved, re- reconstructed roadway in a proper private done and that's plea.
I kind of like the wiggliness it has, but that's just me. And, and I want to thank you particularly for mentioning the fact that you're moving it ever so slightly a bit because that actually was a concern I'd heard several times from long, some longstanding denizens of the neighborhood, how one side was much tighter than the other and it was the side where cars might park occasionally too. So it seemed problematic. So I think that sounds really good and I'll be happy to share that with the neighborhood when I see people. So thank you very much for that. I'll look one more time to my colleagues and see if there's anything more in the city manager's report. And if not, we will then next go to city council member reports. And let's see who might want to be first, if anybody has anything this time of year. And I see council member Vice Mayor Harvey with your hand up.
Yes, we had the Sonoma County Waste Management Agency meeting, Zero Waste Sonoma the other day, and we reviewed the budget plan for the next year. And there's a couple of new things happening, which are kind of neat. One is what will be coming back and I believe it's 14th is the CRV collection. We were able to get a grant and so you will start to see some of those. The first pilot one is being done in Sebastopol. It's at a church. So hopefully that will get people involved in, in CRV again, so that they can get their money back on that. The other thing that's proposed in the budget that will be happening is fix it clinics. And they will be doing, they're working, partnering with Green Mary and she will get what they're called fixers. And they will be able to have people bring small appliances and tools and different things and, and pair them with people that can help fix things so that we don't end up tossing them out. So that's a new program. So that'll be, that'll be kind of interesting. The other thing is tomorrow is our first North Bay Division meeting. And we will be having Brandon Castillo. And he will be going over the 2022 November ballot measures as he sees them coming along now. So we're looking forward to that. If you haven't registered and want to register, you can, I'm sure you have a link to do that. And we are being honored by having the president of Cassidy's Cindy Solva. She will be joining us at our first meeting this year. So that's all I have for tonight.
Excellent. Well, thank you, Vice Mayor Harvey. And I think that wraps it up then it looks like for city council member reports, which will take us then to item 11, which is public comment on non-action agenda items. Oh, wait a minute. I see one more hand up here. Council member more.
Thank you, Mayor Lemon. I, I didn't want to interrupt there, so I thought I'd wait till the end there. I just wanted to report, we had a library advisory board meeting last Tuesday on the 18th. And just a couple of things that the library is doing. They have come up with some terrific teen service projects. One, working with stress reduction for the kids, having to deal with the pandemic issues and all those related stressors. And that's a terrific program that they've started. And then they've got the Unicorn Project, which is another program that came about through the teen representatives and that is to assist with suicide awareness and outreach for children that may be extremely stressed and, you know, young adults and hopefully assist those folks in a time of need. They, the Library Commission for the County has indicated that they wanted to put a, a full branch in Roseland at the corner of Earn and Dutton. That'll be a couple of years down the road by the time they get that put together, but that would be a community center with a much bigger library. They have a small one there now, but not quite as accessible as the, as a bigger one. And then finally, they have a, there is an act out there called SIPA, which is the Child Internet Pornography Act. And that act has put out information regarding particular grants to different libraries. The Sonoma County Library years ago did not go after any of those grants because they had some concerns regarding First Amendment rights. They have now felt that with some of the filters available on the internet and security programs available, they may be able to participate in that particular act and could be eligible for grants that would help the local libraries. And that's it on my reports. Thank you.
Well, thank you. All right. I'm going to look one more time and seeing no other hands, I'll just briefly mention kind of a late breaking Sonoma Clean Power update. Just to make this a little clearer for the mute community. Most people are aware of Sonoma Clean Power and it's the type of agency that's called a community choice aggregation or CCA more typically because it's a lot shorter. And one thing about CCAs we found is then there were so few of us and compared to the larger industrial organizations, the investor-owned utilities were smaller. We did form a trade organization, a statewide trade organization that can consist of most of the CCAs. And after a few years, it became apparent to us that some of the things we need to build, if we want to start building cleaner power, renewable power, is that we needed to be able to work together on larger projects because even the biggest CCA alone and by itself can't quite build something large enough for some of the things we would like to share. Yeah. So we, through our Califor, CalCCA, our trade association, we formed a community power members group just for that process. And I'm pleased to announce that our January 19th meeting, the board down there entered into an energy storage service agreement with rev renewables for 69 megawatts, which translates, I guess, to 552 megawatt hours of long duration energy storage. These will be grid, KISO grid connected lithium ion battery storage. It'll be in Kern County. It should be online roughly 2026. So roughly in the near term and Sonoma Clean Power was one of the listed seven CCAs participating in that. So some of our power will be taking advantage of that. And as we know, storage is one of the big, big keys to making wind, solar and geothermal, especially wind and solar work better. So that's an important thing and an example of us being able to work together and do good things, I hope. So with that, I'll bring it back then to our next agenda item, which is public comments on non-action agenda items. And I'll ask if we have any public comment on non-action agenda items tonight.
Looking to our attendees tonight, if you would like to make a public comment, please use your raise hand icon. Mayor Lemon, that will end a public comment.
All right. Thank you. So this brings us to item 15. I'll ask the city manager if we have any information received after the agenda was posted.
Nothing that wasn't already added to the packet, I believe, by the clerk.
Excellent. So this brings us to item 16, which is announcement of a closed session of topics and adjournment to closed session. We will be adjourning to closed session for a conference with labor negotiators, government code section 54957.6. City designated representative will be city manager. Employee organizations include the Katati Employees Association, Katati Police Officers Association, the Katati Police Managers Association and non-representative employees. So we will be logging out of this meeting and logging back into that and we will report out later and adjourn if we have anything to report out. So with that, I'll just check to make sure all my colleagues have the link for the closed session. I'm not seeing any concerned looks, so I think we're in good shape. So I will see you all there. Thank you.
Uh-oh, did the mayor get lost?
Uh-oh, we lost the mayor, Damian.
Yeah, I was trying to keep track of him. He could be here soon. He's having just some slow connection, I think with Zoom.
The iPads are not the easiest to navigate around anyway.
Yeah. You get like a different uh, look and feel and, and just, it's different. Oh, there he is. You're not there yet, Mark.
Try that. Thank you.
There you are.
It's good to have a vice mayor. All right. So as I was saying, we are back from closed session. We have nothing to report out. And that takes us to our last item, which is adjournment. And we are adjourned tonight at 7:43. Thank you everybody for your work tonight and thank you for everybody in the community who might have attended or watched online. We look forward to seeing you at our next meeting, hopefully. Good night.